We're ready?
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining today. Being that we have quorum, I'd like to call this meeting into order.
Good afternoon. Today is Wednesday, December 3, 2025. And this is a special meeting of the Board of Trustees for the El Paso County Riskful Board. This meeting will also be accessible via Microsoft Teams and via YouTube for the public. The time is 1:03 PM. We currently have Vice Chair Vanhu, Trustee Asensio, Trustee Rontum, and Trustee Garcia absent. Chair Sancillo is attending virtually. Chair Sancillo, we have two individuals to address the board. First public comment is Benisa Costa from Human Resources.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I just have a quick announcement to introduce to you Christina Ramirez. So we had a little change in our department. One of our, actually our Deputy HR Officer from our Employment Services Division, they accepted another position outside of the county, so that position's currently vacant. So in order to assist our department with operational needs, I'm currently overseeing the Employment Services Division along with the Risk Management. So Christina has been promoted temporarily into the position of overseeing Risk Management. So you'll see her be part of these Riskful Board meetings while we work through that vacancy. We are looking into filling that position, so you'll see me back again. So Christina here, so I didn't want you all just to wonder like, what is she doing here? But she's assisting and overseeing our Risk Management Division, which includes Benefits and the Riskful Board. So just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce to you, to you all, to Christina. Just temporarily.
Welcome to the board, Christina.
Second public comment is Joan Apalua from Human Resources.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So my public comment, I have two. So the first one is to introduce some additional individuals that are here joining us for this meeting. So we have two staff members from the Blue Cross Blue Shield team. The first one is Mr. Ben Suarez. He's the new Senior Manager. And then we obviously have Rosiel Mayeco. She's part of our Account Management as well. So I just want to give them a minute to introduce themselves.
Thank you for the honor of having us over here. We are very grateful to be here. We know that, you know, this is something so important from a benefits perspective for all of your employees and all of the members. And so knowing that you chose us is definitely a privilege. I want to share with all of you that we don't take that lightly. It's very much a personal thing for all of us at the La Crosse family. And so we're here to serve you, excited to be joining in person today and hoping we can continue to do that for many more, any more meetings. Thank you for the support and for the partnership and for the trust.
Yeah, that would echo everything Rossia said. New to the team, been on native La Crosse, been in Blue for 19 years. I was managing the North half of Texas. Recently been transferred to the San Antonio, to run the San Antonio office. And so I'm happy to be here. Thank you guys for your business. I know that we're wrapping up our first year, moving into the second year. So very excited to be on board and to hear everything that you guys have to talk about. And more importantly, you have my commitment to make sure that whatever we can do to make this relationship, this relationship work, you have my, you have my absolute good comments. So thank you guys for having us.
Does that include an additional discount?
We'll talk about that later.
It's hard to ask.
You're right.
Thank you. Okay, the final public comment, I did want to add that Trustee Mr. Enes Sodatencio did notify us that he will not be renewing his term with the Riskful Board. So this is his final meeting. So I do want to give a moment for Trustee Asensio to say it.
Well, it started back in, you know, 2019. An interesting ride, a lot of interesting facts. We've gone through a lot of different things. With the paramount objective was taking care of the employees of the county, tenants, retirees. I've enjoyed it. My background has been somewhat detail oriented. So all the documents that I sent, I can just jump in and have a good time with them. Definitely not boring. The staff here has always been top notch. New ribbon all the way. Can't say more than that. Other than at the very beginning of it, when I started being here, I thought the world was going to fall down on us because of cars. Got used to that. But other than that, I say thank you to everyone. And it's been my honor pretty much to serve.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Asensio. Thank you for the time you've dedicated to this board. I can't believe it's six years already. I mean, time has flown. And as you mentioned, there's been so many challenges and opportunities during these past six years. So we appreciate your time. We value all the feedback that you've provided during this, this board meetings. So we truly appreciate it and it's been an honor for us as well.
It's still be tough shoes to fill for the new board.
From a board perspective, it's been a true pleasure. I think I've been along as long as you have. And his insights and comments have been truly valuable from a board perspective. So I'd like to add my thanks. And you taught me a lot, what we served on this fortune.
You'll truly be missed. I started to learn some things from him. I could kind of go to him and say, do you really miss? And he's like, well, yeah. Oh my God, just coming next. I want you fucking to trust somebody and work well with someone. So yes, you will truly be missed.
Yes, thank you very much for your service, Trustee Asensio. Really appreciated sitting next to you all these years, during all these meetings. A lot of insightful information, different perspectives. So definitely will be missing, missing you on the next meetings.
We'll go ahead and proceed then to the Consent Agenda. So the Consent Agenda consists of Item 3A through 3F. Does any member of the board wish to remove an item from the Consent Agenda to discuss in more detail? Does any member of the audience or staff wish to remove an item from the Consent Agenda?
Staff is requesting to pull Item 3F from the Consent Agenda.
Then we'll go ahead and start by proceeding to motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 3A through 3E. Do we have a motion?
A motion to accept Consent Agenda 3A through 3E.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, were we just going to pull E?
And F, but we'll review the item right now.
Okay.
So we had Chair Asensio first and then second from Urtado. Chair Sancillo?
Aye.
Vice Chair Vanhu?
Aye.
Trustee Asensio?
Aye.
Trustee Urtado?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia absent, motion carries. Consent Agenda Item 3F, accept the August and September 2025 Employee On-Site Health Clinic Invoice.
Hey, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Staff has pulled this item as we wanted to provide additional information for the September UMC On-Site Health Clinic invoice. As you can see on the invoice here towards the bottom right corner, there is an additional $40,175 in capital equipment costs added. This is a one-time capital improvement cost that is part of our agreement with UMC, which is outlined in the bottom of the second page of Exhibit 8, which we usually attach to this invoice. So they hadn't charged us this amount yet. So they went ahead and added it on here. So we just wanted to, for transparency, first show the purpose of the 40,000. Does any board member have any questions?
Do you have the agenda there?
Yes, it's attached. The whole agreement is on there. And on Exhibit 8, it does mention the 40,000.
And that's an annual?
So one time for the life of the contract.
One time every, every year?
No, not every year, just for the life of the contract, yes.
It's for capital improvement in their thing? That they, that we agreed that it would be just charged one time for the life of the contracts for five years?
And does the equipment belong to us?
It belongs to UMC.
UMC?
Yes. It's for the onsite clinic that's here in, in the lower level of the board.
Because in the agreement, I believe that Taylor with equipment involves like the computers, printers, any updates they need to do to the system's softwares.
Oh, what is the term of the agreement?
Five years.
For, what is it?
I think we're.
Yeah, you have that every year. Thank you.
And do we have a motion to accept Item 3F under the Consent Agenda?
Aye.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Chair Sancillo?
Aye.
Vice Chair Vanhu?
Aye.
Trustee Asensio? Trustee Urtado? Trustee Garcia absent, motion carries. Proceeding to the regular Agenda Item 4A, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the nomination and election of Chair and Vice Chair for the Board of Trustees of the Riskful Board.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman and members of the board, in accordance with the Riskful Bylaws and the County's Uniform Rules and Procedures Policy for all county boards, the county board is required to choose a Chair and a Vice Chair annually on or after July 1st. So we would like to start off nominations first for the Chair and then we'll proceed for the Vice Chair.
Which is, there's no term limits on how an individual from service chair or board chair?
No.
I guess it would be fair to ask first before you nominate somebody. I prefer some of that.
Think of respectfully decline.
So, so can I submit to maintain the current slate?
To nominate Mr. Sancillo?
Yes.
You can make a motion to nominate.
I made a motion to nominate.
Chair Sancillo? Do we have a second?
Second.
Chair Sancillo?
Aye.
Yes.
Vice Chair Vanhu? Trustee Asensio? Trustee Urtado? Trustee Garcia absent, motion carries.
And for the, I know you said for the third, do you want to make a motion for the Vice Chair?
Yes, for Miss Vanhu to maintain her current position. You're sure?
I'll second.
Do we have a second? Thank you. Chair Sancillo?
Aye.
Vice Chair Vanhu?
Aye.
Trustee Asensio?
Aye.
Trustee Urtado?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia absent, motion carries. Proceeding to regular Agenda Item 4B, discuss and take appropriate action on the Riskful Board meeting scheduled for Plan Year 2026.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. You're very brought out with the Human Resources Department. Every year, staff faces a new plan year board for meeting calendar and agenda items for the board to review. The following benefits have continued to occur by holding meetings to every month versus, every other month versus every month. This include, and is not limited to, efficient preparation of board meetings, freeing up the board member time. As we know, it may be difficult to attend meetings as our board members may have other commitments. And holding Riskful Board meetings every other month has allowed board members to obtain backup items in a timely manner and decrease the lead items and to delete items. Therefore, staff recommends, staff recommends to continue the same schedule for 2026, which is before you. Does the board have any questions with proposed schedule? If not, staff is requesting for the board to approve the continuation of meeting every other month on the third Wednesday with the ability for the Chair to call special meeting dates.
Motion to approve schedule for 2026.
Chair Sancillo?
Aye.
Vice Chair Vanhu?
Aye.
Trustee Asensio?
Aye.
Trustee Urtado?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia absent, motion carries. Regular Agenda Item 4F, discuss and take appropriate action on the EDNA reports for June to September 2025. Or C, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, EDNA was not able to be able to attend today's meeting and their attendance was crucial for this item. Therefore, staff is requesting to postpone the item for the next regular meeting.
Okay, does that require a motion?
Motion to.
To postpone the item for the next regular meeting.
Second.
Chair Sancillo?
Aye.
Vice Chair Vanhu?
Aye.
Trustee Asensio? Trustee Urtado? Trustee Garcia absent, motion carries. Regular Agenda Item 4D, discuss and take appropriate action on the First Amendment and First Option to renew of the services agreement between El Paso County and Hub International Texas, Inc. for consultation services for health and dental benefits.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the purpose of this Agenda is, Agenda Item is to seek the board's approval on the first option to renew the contract between the county and Hub International for health and dental consultation services. On November 7, 2022, the Commissioners Court awarded RFP 22027 to Hub International Texas for consultation services for health and dental benefits for the county. Based on the award of the RFP and response to the RFP by Hub International, the services agreement was developed. The purpose of the agreement is to provide the county with an independent benefits consultant who can provide advice and assistance to the county and its Riskful Board for employee health and dental benefits. Management and access is represented with third-party providers and other parties as needed. The term of the contract is for a three-year period with a renewal option for two additional one-year period. This agreement before you represents the first of the two renewal options, beginning of January 1, 2026 to December 31, 2026. Does the board have any question? If not, staff is requesting the Riskful Board to recommend the Commissioners Court to approve the last option, sorry, the first option to renew with Hub International.
I'll make a motion to accept Item 4A, 4D, I'm sorry.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Chair Sancillo?
Aye.
Vice Chair Vanhu?
Aye.
Trustee Asensio? Trustee Urtado?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia absent, motion carries. Proceeding to regular Agenda Item 4E, discuss and take appropriate action on the reinstatement and potential changes to the Health and Dental Summary Plan descriptions. To include revised effective date to reflect January 1, 2025, added language clarifying employee eligibility, revised and added language in the medical plan clarifying GLP-1s are to only be covered by the plan with a diabetic diagnosis, revised language throughout the medical plan document identifying the Blue Cross Blue Shield as the new TPA vendor, revised language for newborn eligibility in the dental plan, added Mexico Network language in the dental plan, removed integration with medical benefits language in the dental plan, remove surviving dependent and spouse language in the dental plan, added language for special enrollment in the dental plan, and updated Human Resources address in the dental plan.
A mouthful, sorry. Okay, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, El Paso County sponsors a healthcare plan that is administered by a third-party administrator, the TPA, which is currently Blue Cross Blue Shield. As part of the plan, the county develops and maintains a summary plan description, also known as an SPD, which describes the medical, dental, and pharmacy benefits, as well as employee rights and responsibilities. The SPD is also a guide to the benefits provisions and programs offered by the healthcare plan. The summary plan description is a very comprehensive document, which is updated each year to include changes approved by the Riskful Board and Commissioners Court. The SPD has also transitioned to a new format, as you can see, as Blue Cross Blue Shield has provided their own formatting to make it easier to read for the employee. The changes this year involve clarification language on employee eligibility. And in addition to this, I would like to go over the additional changes for Plan Year 25, 2025. Throughout the SPD document, we reviewed and revised language to ensure the plan is in full compliance with the healthcare reform. This included revising the effective date to reflect January 1, 2025. Revised and added language in the medical plan clarifying glucagon-like peptide 1, also known as a GLP-1, are to only be covered by a plan with a diabetic diagnosis. Please note, we currently do not cover weight loss medications as the county offers a robust wellness program, which includes many options on weight loss assistance. However, we are doing research on the impact of incorporating weight loss medications to the plans as well, into our programs. Once we have more information, we will bring back to the Riskful Board and of course, our Commissioners Court. Revised language throughout the medical plan document identifying Blue Cross Blue Shield as the new TPA. Moving on to the dental summary plan description, we revised language for newborn eligibility to clarify that newborns must be enrolled within 31, 31 days with a special enrollment period in order to be eligible for coverage. We added Mexico Network language as the dental plan coverage extends to providers in Mexico. Removed integration with medical benefits language due to the changing carriers. Removed surviving dependent and spouse language to clarify that their dental coverage eligibility continues after their Medicare eligibility. We added language for special enrollment in regards to when coverage ends. And we updated the Human Resources address as our old address will still be reflected in the document. Staff is recommending for the Riskful Board to recommend the Commissioners Court. Staff is recommending for the Risk Pool Board to recommend the Commissioners' Court to approve the restatement and changes as presented to the Health and Dental SPD for plan year 25. Do we have any question?
I do. So, uh, in order, we have 31 days to enroll the baby.
Correct.
And if, let's say it's 35 days and we haven't, what happens? Is there any?
Unfortunately, they would not be eligible because the SPD does include the 31 days that they have to submit the paperwork. Now, of course, if they are denied by us, then they can go ahead, of course, and submit to the Risk Pool Board as an appeal.
Okay, so there's a lot of times where babies are NICU babies and you can see that they'll be there 30, 40, 50, 90 days, 100 days. And the parents, the last thing they're thinking about is enrolling the child. They're more concerned about, that is my baby or not dead.
Right.
Uh, I mean, those circumstances, and there's others, go on, but, um, would they be, would Blue Cross allow them to add the baby at a later time, given the situation? Not, I, not that they just forgot, I agree, 31 days, but there is other situations, other circumstances that, could they go to here or could they go to Blue Cross and enroll?
They would have to go through us, um, because we would have that, the first day, I don't want to say final day because they could still appeal to the board, but they would have the first day. Uh, normally, honestly, throughout my time, I haven't seen it occur where it passes the 31 days when it comes to that situation, because normally hospitals, they'll provide them with the birth bags and that's the first thing they want, they want to get paid. So they'll tell them about the insurance and they let them know that they're not active in their coverage. So that's normally the first sign, um, to come to us and enroll them.
Okay, well, it still didn't answer my question. In fact, it's been 60 days, baby's been in NICU, they're twins, I mean, I thought it's quite often possible.
Right.
Um, we'd, we'd consider.
At that point, I would say we would have to refer them to the board since there can't be the final say. It would have to appeal.
We had, not exactly similar, uh, individuals in the past, uh, went past their enrollment dates and they came in and gave it to the board, they were denied afterwards. The Sheriff's Department, uh, judge.
Yeah, city voice.
And so, it wasn't a really extenuating circumstance. It was pretty much decided there.
No.
Whereas in this case, it's really something great for all of us. Nothing's binding on it, it's a shit thing, right?
Right.
That's why the outlet of the appeals process kind of encouraged to say, yeah, I'm in.
Okay, so it wouldn't be final, we come to us.
It would continue, yeah.
Yeah, because given that newborns, it's just.
Right.
It's the same regardless. Thank you.
Can I may add, um, quickly, from a compliance perspective, in order to keep the integrity of the cafeteria plan, which is administered by the county as being self-insured, the QLE qualifying like event must be triggered and it has to be done within 31 days. Anything outside of the 31 days could impact stop-loss claims. And where an employee or member may not be covered under those stop-loss because it was done outside of the 31-day period.
And that's through the IRS, um, federal rule of the cafeteria, because our plan is pretext. So employees need to abide by those criteria that the IRS puts in place.
And the board, and the, the appeal to the board is, is, is an option, but it's important to know too that consistency is also important too. So we're, we're denying one employee.
Any precedent?
We don't want to set precedents and add somebody else without, having denied two others within the last few years.
One of the advantages there is that, as I mentioned, semi-self-regulating, hospitals won't keep you paid.
Yes.
So it's in their best interest to say, uh, maybe it's a time. And that usually happens, not always, right? A lot. And everything's going crazy, someone's got a frown or, you know, this is another resource available.
And we do our part on the other end when they're coming in for infantile life or the birth of their child. We do remind them and continue reminding them, don't forget, once your baby is born, they're going to give you a verification. Send that our way. And so we make it easy for them to provide that information to us. So we remind them before the baby is even born.
So let's say five, six days before the 31st. You'll follow up, just wanted to see how you're doing, how's the baby, is everything okay? Because we haven't received a form. And then that's when they're going to tell you, well, don't worry in trouble or maybe you feel sick or. It's just, I think that follow-up five days prior would probably help a lot. It's still going to be like, oh, I haven't had, you know, I don't even know if the baby's still there. You know, like the NICU is a distant, I, I haven't even looked at the form. Looked at it, starting in any kind of form, ask it for it. I think that would be helpful because number one, given that it's an employee. And you want to be in compliance, like you want to make sure that you meet the 31 days. Uh, I think it'd be very helpful for the employee and then after you've followed up, everyone's followed up, the hospital, the hospital, well, I shouldn't say the hospital, the hospitals are problems. They really kind of stand back with the baby set sick and we don't know what's happening with the baby. And of course, we, they want to get paid. But it's, it's a rule inside that you don't push that type of situation as well. We'll get it. And, and, and now Humana, United, they pay us, they pay them. They pay them, this situation was that happened. And so, yeah, I think just a little bit of follow-up one more time prior to the 31st, five, six days would be, would be essential. So that way, nobody feels like, oh, God, we haven't had a baby. Forgot, nobody told us, hospital was like. Yeah, they have patient relations, they go in and talk to them, and it's like, oh.
Any other question? Do we have a motion to approve regular agenda item four E?
Motion to approve four E.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Yes. Chair Sessi though?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Hu?
Aye.
Trustee Asensio? Trustee Urtado?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia, absent, motion carries. Proceeding to regular agenda item four F, discuss and take appropriate action on the 2026 Blue Cross Blue Shield Stop Loss Renewal Rate 2025-0958. Members of the board, the purpose of this agenda item is to seek the board's approval on the 2026 Blue Cross Blue Shield Stop Loss Renewal Rate. The purpose of the stop-loss insurance is to protect the risk pool fund from catastrophic individual claims over $300,000. Over the past six years, the county's risk pool fund has experienced an average five to six stop-loss claims. This year, between January and September 2025, the county's risk pool fund has experienced seven stop-loss claims in excess of $300,000. The stop-loss renewal proposal rate from Blue Cross Blue Shield Insurance Company maintains a $300,000 deductible without any members who require a separate deductible, meaning no lasering. Does the board have any questions?
So does the consultants feel good with that seven threshold? Is that, is that normal industry standard for a plan this size?
Yeah, so we feel comfortable with that 300,000 threshold, given the amount of, um, high-cost claimants that are currently, that we're currently seeing. Um, in fact, we might have had a different conversation last year, but this year is turning out to be more favorable and looking more like in 2023, which was better than 2024. So, that's your question, yes, we, we believe that this is a good renewal and we believe that the spec level should remain the same based on the current things.
We look at the renewal rate every year.
Yes, so stop-loss is an annual.
And if I may add, the rates are, I didn't mention the actual rate. Uh, so for this year, it was 112 and 17 cents per employee per month, uh, which averaged about $3,610,079. Uh, the renewal rate is $123 with 27 cents per employee per month, which is $3,967 with $321.
Which is about a 9% increase. And so, um, Hub had estimated in their forecast an increase, um, it was 12. So it was under the percentage that, um, Hub had forecasted. So we had already accounted for an increase in, in.
Are you okay with that lasering? No laser.
No laser, no.
Would you have had some, because this is, the lasering is not a new, uh, option in the contract, right? You have, we have lasered before.
We have. There's been, um, I think, one time with, and we were under ENNA, that we did have one individual who was lasered.
Okay.
So we've, we've had that.
I remember.
Okay, thank you.
I think staff is requesting for the Risk Board to recommend the Commissioners' Court to approve the 2026 Stop Loss Renewal Rate.
Maybe.
Do we have a second?
Same, I'll second.
Chair Sessi though?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Hu?
Aye.
Trustee Asensio?
Aye.
Trustee Urtado?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia, absent, motion carries. Proceeding to regular agenda item four G, discuss and take appropriate action on the Blue Cross Blue Shield travel benefit coverage under the medical plan.
I'll let Joanna rest a little bit. So I'll be addressing the board. So the purpose of this agenda item is to seek the board's approval on the travel benefit coverage for benefit services received outside of El Paso. So currently, the county's medical plan only covers travel reimbursement for transplant services. However, this is an opportunity for the plan to cover travel expenses for transportation and lodging um, that the member incurs for traveling, that is necessary to obtain any covered medical services or behavioral health services rendered by an in-network provider if there is no in-network provider available to perform the services um, here locally within 100-mile radius. So Blue Cross, um, has confirmed that there is no additional admin fee to be able to administer this, this coverage for the entire, um, plan. If the board approves, staff will be adding this benefit in the 2026 summary plan description for final approval from the Commissioners' Court. So this is what we refer to as an umbrella travel coverage, which will cover, you know, the, any benefit services that the plan covers. And if they're not able to seek services here locally, that they have to travel out to El Paso to obtain those services, then the travel reimbursement would be, uh, applicable.
Well, can you give us an example of which physician is not in-network? Or whether we apply services here in El Paso?
So if there is a certain cancer treatment that's not available here in El Paso, that they would have to travel out of El Paso to be able to obtain those services, that would be an example.
And who makes time determination on approving that minimum?
So that would be, it would go through Blue Cross claim, um, administration and they would determine based on the services that they're receiving and to identify if truly they're not able to receive those services.
That was a nice question. And it's trying to basically get only oncology, hopefully, right?
Right, and if it would have to be.
Wait, a transplant is already coming.
Transplants are coming, yes. It's only.
Is there a cap on the, um, is there a cap on the reimbursement amount, the limits?
It would be $10,000. For occurrence, yes. So if they have a different type of service that they're also not able to seek here locally, then they also have that, that limit, that $10,000 limit.
Does this cover dependents as well, like a companion, a travel companion? Or like if a child needs services to make sure that the parent is also able to travel?
Great question. So yes, it does cover a companion and it covers up to two companions if the, if the member is under the age of 18.
Okay.
What does travel mean? They go on a bus, if they go in a plane, they go via ambulance?
So it would depend on, on their, if they, if they're able to travel through plane, you know, that would be that reimbursement. Or if they're traveling via their car or, you know, a bus. So it would be reinforcing the mileage if they're traveling by vehicle.
What if, uh, they need to go back via ambulance or plane, like, you know, they have those planes and along the, you know, plane?
Yeah, I don't know, if the cost of, of, of.
Transportation, um, well, there's emergency care on the medical plan. Um, but transportation, we'd have to double-check with, uh, Blue Cross and show that that gets covered in terms of flying, flying.
Right. So it would reimburse their plane ticket. But if they're in emergency and they need to be.
Have to go with them. When they're, a thing that comes over the hospital.
Yeah, like the helicopter.
Yes, yes. I, I know they would get the helicopter, many times. So I, I know there's a company that performs, provides that service, but sometimes it's out in the contract where it's covered and the parents even haven't paid for something. And we're talking about in thousands.
Yeah, I think that it's already built in, right, the medical hospital.
Emergency medical coverage, when medical assistance, whatever, like area, they land off of, off of, off of mountain, for example, that's all part of the medical policy, outside of what we're talking about here with this transplant, you know, with the travel.
So that's in emergency cases. This is actual services that they make an appointment with provider. They make plans on, on traveling to that location.
Okay, thank you.
And then they're concerned with me like a severe burn, like.
Right. To transfer them to.
I'll make a motion to accept item four G.
Second.
Chair Sessi though?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Hu?
Aye.
Trustee Asensio?
Aye.
Trustee Urtado?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia, absent, motion carries. Regular agenda item four H, discuss and take appropriate action on the inter-local agreement 2025-0893 between the El Paso County and the University Medical Center of El Paso for the Employee On-Site Clinic. Members of the board, the purpose of this agenda item is to seek the board's approval on the second option to renew the inter-local agreement with UMC for the onsite employee clinic. Since 2012, the county provides an employee health clinic at the El Paso County Courthouse through an inter-local agreement between El Paso County and the University Medical Center of El Paso. And the purpose of the clinic is to provide a medical alternative for members of the county's health plan and to help reduce employees' sick leave usage due to the convenience of having an onsite clinic. The inter-local agreement establishes the services and costs for the county's onsite employee health clinic. Staff is requesting for the Risk Board to recommend the Commissioners' Court to approve the second option to renew the inter-local agreement with UMC. Do we have any question?
Yes. Okay, so it came with a range schedule of 783,000. This is for 2026. It didn't come with what currently is, what the cost is. So what was the increase percentage-wise? And is that in the agreement that it's allowed every, every year to increase the leverage? And can we see, I'd like to see what, what it was this year compared to what it's going to be in 2026.
Right. So yes, the increase was due to the, a salary increase that they gave to the UMC doctor, um, that's onsite and to the staff. It was a 3% increase. Everything else remained the, the same.
And it does state that in the original agreement that they would look at any increases, um, that would be negotiated. So that's part of the original agreement.
So are we able to see the 2025? I'd like, when we have agreements like this and we have increases, whatever they may be, I'd like to see the current versus the proposed for the following years of UMC work. I'd like, when we have agreements like this and we have increases, whatever they may be, I'd like to see the current versus the proposed for the following years of, once you work. Oh, you don't have any questions, we can look at where the reaches is correct.
Yeah.
Patient volume was good there?
Yes, um, the report, it's the ministry report.
Patient utilization, utilization, yes.
Going up, going down, trending.
Oh, yes. If anything is going up, um, I know just by also word of mouth of our employees, they, well, first, they look Dr. Nyack, they really do. Uh, and then also they call and usually they can't find an appointment that day, they have to go the next day. Uh, so definitely utilization is going up and we do have those reports that was in the.
It's.
Definitely, it's, it's everywhere.
Yes.
But the world's trend, I mean, I don't.
Well, yes, no, definitely. Of course, right now during the holidays, it does trend less, um, but definitely it is trending up instead of down.
Thank you.
Being highly enjoys.
Yes, especially since now we only pay five dollars, it's, it's a deal.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion. Second.
Chair Sosilo?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Hu?
Aye.
Trustee Asensio?
Aye.
Trustee Urtado?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia absent, motion carries. Proceeding to regular agenda item four J. Discuss and take appropriate action to accept the human resources bi-monthly reports to the risk board.
You read, you read um, J instead of I. I'm so sorry.
Regular agenda item four I. Discuss and take appropriate action to accept the bi-monthly reports from Hub International Benefits Consulting.
Good afternoon, Chair Sosilo, members of the board. Patrick Avila with Hub International, happy to be here to provide an update on the county's health plan. Um, typically, it seems Liz Bevo here, but unfortunately, due to the race schedule, she wasn't able to attend. So I'll be providing the presentation today. Um, just as a reminder, the data that we're going to be reviewing is going to be data through September. And so we'll be bringing other data to you at, in the following um, risk award meetings. Um, as we move over to slides. Um, we have a health plan summary claims through September. You can see that the net medical and pharmacy paid claims are running at seven seventy-nine per employee per month. This is a slight decrease from the last time we met, which was running at seven eighty-seven. Um, however, um, since the last time we met, we don't feel that we have the need to change any of the projections. Um, slight decrease, we're still seeing claims come in, we don't anticipate that our projections would change based on any additional, uh, these additional ones of claims. Some of the items that factor into your P E P M include your high-cost claimants and we track claims, uh, high-cost claimants that exceed a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, and those claims are, this year are developing more favorably than in two thousand twenty-four. Um, you'll see that in two thousand twenty-four, we had twenty-six claimants who exceeded a hundred fifty thousand dollar threshold. Um, and year-to-date, we've had uh, through September, fifteen claimants at the end, uh, fifteen claimants who are averaging three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Um, eight claimants uh, on the current high-cost payment were from two thousand twenty-four, and so they continue to generate uh, claims, or high costs. When we factor in the administrative expenses, credits, rebates, et cetera, through September two thousand twenty-five, we're looking at a P E P M of six sixty-seven six, also compared to the prior year of two thousand twenty-four and nine fifty-three. And what's factoring into that favorable decrease from the prior year, um, a big chunk of it is um, the administrative credits that we're receiving from Blue Cross Blue Shield, which were recorded earlier this year, one point two million. Um, there are three rebate uh, payments which were paid by Aetna, totally one point four million, that's also contributing to the P E P M. And then lastly, the dental plan is running on thirty-four twenty-seven P E P M compared to the prior year, so running, running well. Specifically, we're oriented with this uh, page of the claim performance, um, we track enrollments um, through the months and then provide an average enrollment. Uh, we track claims, so gross medical, gross uh, dental, and then we track the administrative expenses, which include the fees that you pay to Blue Cross Blue Shield. Um, to get a total medical plan cost and that's six sixty-seven six, and that is consistent with what we spoke about earlier. And then the last piece on this page would be the contribution to expense ratio. Um, as a reminder, this is what we look at when we try to identify whether the revenues of the plan is covering the expenses. And we know that they are. We know that the health plan is, is healthy and we know that um, county uh, monitors uh, contributions to ensure that they're covering expenses.
I just have a question. So are we still seeing claims from Aetna?
The run-out claims, yes, we are seeing some run-out claims. Um, typically, there's twelve months, they, they keep the account open for twelve months so that claims can continue to be paid.
Oh, wow, okay. Um, and so starting, so starting January, when you see, we're not going to see more claims?
We should, we shouldn't, because it's, there's a twelve-month reporting uh, period that providers can submit claims to be paid.
So these are all the news from two thousand twenty-four? The providers are given notice that they have, you know, one year from the claim to be able to submit, otherwise, even if they submitted the following year, I don't think they would profit.
Right. And then lastly, the contribution to expense ratio, um, through September, we see that at fifty-five percent, but um, because we do have three more months left, um, we should see that still going up to about seventy-five percent. So still under, um, still under that one hundred percent mark, which means that we're still funding the plan well. We do the same thing for dental, um, we track enrollment, claims and administrative fees. Um, it doesn't look as busy as the prior page, because it's a lot less information that we share as far as what we track. And again, nothing alarming or concerning on this page, um, we believe that the dental plan will um, perform as protected by the. We were things uh, inflation trend and really what this does, it illustrates how the plan is doing based on inflation. Um, it's actually, you know, based on some of the credits, based on the rebates that we're receiving, um, it, it's being mitigated. But what I would like to put your uh, attention to is the county of El Paso's budget reports. In the month of October, revenues exceeded expenses uh, one point four million. And for fiscal year today, revenues have exceeded expenses by one point four million because the fiscal year began in, in October. Um, the actual reported fund balance as of October thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five is twenty-seven point nine million. Nice report. Yes. And then we uh, go to our dashboard report, which um, outlines the plan and the different mechanics of it in different ways. But really, what we like to highlight here is the high-cost payment uh, report. This is where I was discussing earlier that in two thousand twenty-five, talk so far, we've tracked a total of fifteen claims that have exceeded a hundred fifty thousand. Um, as Ms. Joanna mentioned, there have been seven members who have exceeded the three hundred thousand dollar threshold. That's two additional members or two additional claims that, from the last time we spoke. Um, however, we believe, as mentioned earlier, that at the end of the year, it's, it will look more like what two thousand twenty-three looks like, which is typically the standard, what we see across, across the board with, with your size, or with the county size. We continue to monitor, however, um, and we will determine and bring forth those who will continue to um, generate high-cost payments. And if it gets there, needed, any type of lasering, one of the kinds. As of now, we're, we're good at where we're at. Can we pull it all together from a projected perspective and looking at plan year two thousand twenty-five? Uh, we do expect that the health fund will be at a surplus at the end of two thousand twenty-five. And then as we look at projected expenses for two thousand twenty-six and projected revenues, we also believe that the health fund will come in also at a surplus. Um, so we don't expect these numbers to change uh, very much in the last few months of this year. Um, and then based on claim performance, um, we believe there will be surplus um, in both of the plans.
Um, I, if I remember correctly, at the last meeting, it was discussed that a certain amount of money was going to be given to the county? Was that done, or is that after, and we still have twenty-seven million?
Yes.
So the reduction in employer contribution, meaning county contribution towards the medical plan was a total of four million and it is accounted for in the forecast. So that's being done in these um, last fourteen periods of the plan year, that's already being reduced.
And then the last two reports we'd like to illustrate is just some um, Blue Cross Blue Shield pharmacy reports. Um, we really just put this one here so that we can track um, and monitor the contract performance. So nothing too alarming or, or, nothing alarming or concerning that just here. Uh, but the next report will give you a better picture of what type of um, therapeutic classes that we're treating, but also the top-ranked of drugs. And you'll see that, if we looked at last report, nothing has changed with the exception of some of these drugs. Um, some of the, based on dosage, have kind of gone up and down a few, a few. But otherwise, we're still seeing these G O P ones be the primary top uh, drugs that are being used. And again, as Joanna mentioned, um, only being administered and given to those who have a diabetes, that is, that condition, diagnosis.
Earlier this year, we discussed there were some doctors that were signing descriptions for anjaro's and there was not a diabetic diagnosis. And you all were going to contact the doctor's office or the employee. Have we reduced that, that right now? Or?
So earlier this year?
I don't think it was last year, I think it was this year.
It was reported that there was some individuals we see.
There was, yeah, a, a large number of individuals that were not diabetics getting these drugs. For the time. I think it was, it was towards the end, yeah, in that um, uh, the guidelines for some of the diabetic uh, prescriptions were not eliminating the condition of releasing out while not having. So if some of the doctors, is there a, please, and that wasn't really covered.
But they weren't diabetic.
They weren't diabetic.
Yeah. They were obese.
They were obese, but they weren't diabetic.
Jack had a match.
And so, so keep me honest, when you said, but I believe this may be referring to the smart edits that were in place in two thousand twenty-four by Aetna. Um, where they didn't necessarily have to have a diabetic diagnosis, but they have to be treated for um, prediabetes or comorbidities. And then they would then be eligible to uh, obtain these weight loss medications.
This one, so a few years back, we identified that that was happening. So Aetna offered to implement a smart, what they referred to as a smart edit, to be able to trigger that.
Is it?
Okay.
Right.
Alright, so we, we, because that's exactly what it was. Okay, alright. Okay, but move on.
Well, that concludes, that brings attention. Eighteen eleven, or was it?
Eighteen eleven.
It's eighteen eleven. Uh, is there a line on? Okay, there's one. It's, there's just a line on the.
Sometimes, there is a check right there. And you, uh, one thing to be ready to, in the past, we had less representation for ease of analysis. In years for the, the data, someone kept changing the colors. And so like, it's T is, or two thousand twenty-five, what color is it? About over here, about over here, and it kept changing. And it became standardized that uh, in the future, use the same colors.
Right.
I for example, the yellow one there, twenty-four shouldn't be twenty-four, should be health.
Right.
See what I mean? So when you're analyzing all the, all the data at a glance, to observe the trends, it makes it a whole lot easier.
Okay, absolutely, I'll take that on.
Thank you for the feedback. Any other questions on the report?
Do we have a, a motion to approve a regular agenda item for?
Aye.
Make a motion.
Do we, second? Chair Sosilo?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Hu?
Aye.
Trustee Asensio?
Aye.
Trustee Urtado?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia absent, motion carries. Regular agenda item four J. Discuss and take appropriate action to accept the human resources bi-monthly reports to the risk board.
Alright, I'm surprised we are an hour in and we're pretty much done, what a record. Okay, alright, so I have two items to share with the board. Um, the first one is open enrollment. So as you all know, we had our open enrollment in October. I'd like to share that open enrollment was a great success this year. Um, there were two thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine benefit-eligible employees out of those. Uh, two thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine employees made enrollment election, I'm sorry, two thousand, two thousand eight hundred forty-three, apologize. Um, that means that there were forty-six that did not complete, which is actually the lowest number that we have ever seen um, throughout the years. So in of those forty-six that did not make elections, only eight employees had benefits in two thousand twenty-five. Um, with, they did not have, sorry, they did not have benefits in two thousand twenty-five at the county, but did not elect coverage for plan year twenty-six. A lot of these are because they're retiring, they're leaving, um, or they're just jumping onto other insurance, which is what they're stuffs. So staff is prepared, of course, to assist those employees if they need any coverage with information from the marketplace, um, should they request it. Of course, our biggest accomplishment though for this period was that for the first time, the Human Resources Department achieved its highest completion rate, including a hundred percent enrollment from the sheriff's office, which is amazing, because usually it is very hard um, to get ahold of the officers, so first they have shift work. Um, they can always make it to our enrollment sessions, so with this accomplishment though, we, again, we have enriched it before and it was a result of working together with the sheriff's office H R staff. Um, and of course, our county benefits staff that we met with them prior to open enrollment to discuss tactics on how to achieve maximum completion, which we did.
Well done.
And we partied with a pizza party. Pizza party. Okay, so staff has now entered into the audit and review phase. I will be going over each enrollment to ensure accuracy and appropriate documentation is submitted. So of course, as usual, we will be bringing a presentation in the month of January for our risk award meeting, where we will go over in detail open enrollment. So the next item is in regards to our wellness screening. So as you know, due to the carrier change to Blue Cross Blue Shield, our onsite wellness screenings changed to using Catapult as a vendor. Our team coordinated onsite wellness screenings across multiple county locations to include at-home kits as well. During the months of June, September and October, staff coordinated onsite screenings at the downtown courthouse, Human Resources, the sheriff's office and the juvenile probation department, ensuring employees had convenient opportunities to prioritize their health. The final numbers have been provided by Catapult, resulting in a nine, in nine hundred and sixty-three onsite wellness screening registrations, eight hundred twenty-four collections, eight hundred twenty-two onsite labs processed with eight hundred and twenty-three consultations scheduled and eight hundred and six onsite consultations completed. In addition, there were two hundred and forty-three at-home kit registrations with a hundred and eighty labs collected and processed. And a hundred and seventy-one. Um, and a hundred and seventy-one consultations completed out of a hundred and seventy-four consultations scheduled. So I know that was a lot of numbers, but in a nutshell, we are very proud because it's actually the second highest number of wellness screenings across the years that we have ever had. So we were a little concerned at first because this is a new carrier, new wellness screening process, but it was very well received by our employees. So by it being the second highest number, I actually have no doubt that next year, we're gonna be number one and the highest. So lots of kudos to the team, of course, in achieving those numbers.
Another pizza.
Healthy pizza.
Um, thank you.
And the final item is just to thank the board. We are closing this meeting of the year, it's our last two thousand twenty-five meeting. So thank you to all the board members for all um, your help in the board, all your contributions. They're very valuable to our team, to the employees, so we do thank you and we wish you guys happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Any questions? Any questions?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a, a motion to approve regular agenda item four J? Chair Salsido?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Hu?
Aye.
Trustee Asensio?
Aye.
Trustee Urtado?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia absent, motion carries. So now we will proceed to adjourn. So we'll go ahead and proceed to adjourn the special meeting of the risk pool board. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Chair Salsido?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Hu?
Aye.
Trustee Asensio?
Aye.
Trustee Urtado?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia absent, motion carries. It is now two oh six P M. The special meeting of the Board of Trustees for the El Paso County Risk Pool Board is now adjourned.